Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Before we go to the mayor, I just want to again make it clear we need an executive session at 4:30, 5:30, I'm sorry, around 6 o'clock to discuss legal matters and putting in possible legislative decisions.
That was a reason we're going to have an executive session.
In relation to your work.
In relation to your work exactly, Jeff.
Okay, Mayor, I think you have confirmation?
Yes. It's Thomas Hampton, Michelle Young here. You know, we all make decisions in our lives that affect others, and these two fine folks standing before you made a decision that possibly saved the lives of nine people. So I'd like to tell you their story by reading the proclamation. Whereas in the early morning hours, approximately 2:00 a.m. on February 24th, Thomas Hampton and Michelle Young became heroes. Whereas as they traveled to their homes after completing their shifts at the Sentinel, came upon a scene that they hoped they never experienced again. Whereas approaching the residence of 47 Honeybaker Avenue, they saw smoke and flames coming from the attic. Whereas seeing this, the couple proceeded to the doors and knocked until the residents of the home were awakened. Whereas due to the fact that the fire was between the second floor and the attic, those living in the home may not have detected the danger until the home was totally in flames. Whereas as we go through our lives feeling sometimes that we don't make a difference in the world, but Thomas and Michelle certainly have, therefore I, Deborah A. Vargo, Mayor of the Borough of Lewistown, and on behalf of the Lewistown Borough Council and staff, commend you for your caring response in a situation that could have ended in tragedy. Thank you very much, Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This time we'll have here if your person is present, this will be anything other than the rental inspection ordinance, the registration, anything other than rental ordinance. Does anyone wish to address counsel?
Just my client, or?
Yes, John, come on up. Somebody, do you want to just step over here to the podium, where the secretary has been putting your name and address, please?
John Aiken, 45th Hill Street. Yeah, we've talked about the parking issue down there on Hill Street several times. You guys got to do something here, not making it go downhill. I'm sure we've got to, I'm sure we can come up with some solution better than what we had.
Do you have anything in mind how we can resolve that, Joe? Is there anything?
Honestly?
Other than what's going on, other than putting everything back? Is there anything, because that situation with the parking was not good. You said it had, the parking on Hill Street on your side.
Why don't you make it one way in there to Kish Creek Center, and then I have a parking back? Say that again? Why don't you make it one way in, and then you make the other end of that, make that like you do everything else in Lewistown one way, and then I have a parking back?
Streets are working on that. Do you ever want to study?
That's a private, private lot for whoever has to do that.
And I believe, John, Mr. Rogers, when you were sent a letter, what we were working on, I believe staff was?
Never got one.
You never got anything?
Never got anything.
So, so we aren't working on?
That's something we're working on getting a major set in to calculate the traffic on that street and to check with the proper organizations to see what we could do to...
Is what, is it no doubt the property or any of their property?
Yeah, the property and the right that one way coming in, no exit, that's something we're working on.
That would solve it. That would solve all of it.
Yeah, but it solved the review, but for the...
Is that even actually wide enough to be two lanes? If we're in there with a truck, you can't off Hill Street. If somebody's coming out, you can't get in there without backing up the truck anyway. No, it is very...
It is, yeah.
I'm not sure. I mean, what's the, what's the lane restrictions for a two-way street there? What's that required?
It's a private property there, though. I mean, that's, that's the issue we're running into with it being, you know, it's not a public street, it's entrance to a business, basically.
And that's constructed reserve.
And what was the, what was the zoning ordinance along that?
I don't know, that's, that's something that we were looking at, because we addressed it at the last Streets meeting.
I didn't know, I haven't been there.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind recommending one spot in front of his place, I mean, be a single spot, it probably wouldn't do you good for your pullbacks, but...
If, if it was only entrance, not exit from that Kish Creek Center.
If it was entrance, I, I mean, at that point, parking wouldn't be an issue.
Yes.
That would solve it all. I could go back, put my business, I could survive. You guys have got it one way or two. I'm not sure I'm going to survive without my ability to put cars out for sale, I'm not sure I'm going to survive.
But we don't think it should be a used car lot in front of your building either.
My used car lot was on the side where my trucks are sitting now.
Okay.
And, I mean, I have trucks there now. I mean, if I had to pull them off the street, and I did on the street every night, so I would pull them off, but still, I have a place to put my trucks through the deck, and they went out on the street for us, pretty easy, you guys can sit. I think our call will be to discuss, we'll talk to the owner of that property, see what his position is, because I don't know that we can, I don't know how we can go get around them unless we talk to him.
Sure.
We can extend the trial period another 30 days, full of...
Well, that's something we're going to talk about tonight in the Streets Committee. Yesterday was the annual 90-day trial period, and it was Street, the Street Committee's recommendation to expand it. While we do these tests, as we said, there was a mayor's...
For another, another 30 days.
Another 30 days, yes.
So that's your benefit, Joe.
Okay, I'm, I'm just seeing taxis go away, not being on some of the cars. I'm seeing my pay increase. And that's my whole fault. Dollar per cent, I mean, if any of you guys were here in my spot with the financial impact, would that all be outside of mine?
We're going to work with you.
Appreciate that, because we've got to do something, just tell them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address counsel? If not, moving on to the consent agenda. Gentlemen, as you can see, we have a consent agenda there going through A through H. Is there anything you want to discuss?
Yes. On the facility use request, the Omaha's, that calls the question, the football field of Dallas from March to June, I think we want to put an addendum on their paperwork to make sure that they repair the field or, or get with us about repairing the field, because I have a feeling if they start playing football on this Saturday with the weather we've had, it's going to be less than...
They canceled that first game?
They're going to play on the weekend.
Okay, because I was concerned with the gentleman playing on it, with that field being as wet as it is, we don't want the field.
Then possibly the second game too, if the field looks like it does now.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
And that was my concern too, you know, if they rip it up and they put it back to the state.
Yes, but they're willing to make a repair in Roseville, but that would be fine. Okay.
Anything else from the consent agenda? Is Rex still here? Rex, how about those sewer exonerations?
Yeah, well, what?
Luke and Sinchafer.
What was the address?
Rear 119 West 4th and 620 West 6th.
Yeah, the one was in the middle of the yard, the West 4th. The other was what, 620?
Yes, 620, West 6th.
I forget whatever reported back on that paperwork, what?
That was the trailer.
Trailer.
The trailer.
Water heater.
Oh, yeah, that, that went down into their drain in the basement, but it went out into their front drain around the house.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'd like to mention that...
Second.
Could we second if you approved the consent agenda on favor of I? If you care. Okay, regular agenda, reports, reports in the treasures. Tom, are you still here?
We received our state of the case allocation, it was direct cause over March 6th, in amount of $178,936, we didn't get that. And we also received our license in the amount of $2,500, which represents the timeframe from August to June. That's all I have.
Any questions for the treasurer? Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you.
Enforcement officer.
I think that you go, you go, shut, copy my report. There were 36 violations last month, 20 citations issued last month, we issued 10 snow takers. There were 24 permits issued, and then, who's that, the officer? Barack and Valley Street, yes.
Yes.
That I reached out and got three quotes. Mike Watson seemed to be the one financing everybody. And also, I asked for your finance about subtracting the money from fines to the, to earmark and for projects like this.
We wanted to put some in there, we had a certain amount, we could keep it out. It's still payable money if we need it for something, you know, if something would happen, we would need to get to it, but it will help offset some of the problems we have when we need, when there are some properties, like this one on Valley Street is very, very bad. I mean, if we don't take care of it soon, it's going to foul embolize, but on Valley Street, we don't want it.
That needs to be done. So we need that.
So if we can slowly get these taken care of and have fun to back up with it, that's, that's amazing.
Just, since in a general sense, you said, it's a line item for...
Yeah, we have line item, we have all ready.
Yes.
And for demolition, and if we can turn that money in that direction, through that block. And there's, there are loan letters, but you have counsel, you know, they do make the action.
On your demolition?
On the demolition of that throw-in.
Which is the counsel?
I'll make the motion, because if someone gets hurt...
Second. Could you second this is under demolition at 500 Valley Street? Any questions? John, hold it right. Question carries? Anything else?
That's all I have, nothing else I can report.
No questions? Thanks, Greg. For the fire chief, Bob.
Okay, the department ran 44 calls in the month of February, a couple calls against Dolly Street Fire, we had God calling his lights on in the house, caused a fire, and done a lot of damage to the second floor and attic. Also, we had a fire on Honeybaker Avenue, which you just had the Hamptons up here for, and I'd like to thank them personally for what they've done also. That was a likely fire, and it started in the attic, a bubble. The family was asleep in the second floor, and the fire was a bubble, so it is a very good thing that the Hamptons have stopped this, and it did, and that fire department this time...
Question, question chief, was there a working fire or smoking activity at the moment?
I don't believe there was, I'll have to double check the fire emergency, but there was.
Was there a rental?
It was about just being blind, it was just, just turning it off. Also, we had a fire on North Pine Street about 5:00 a.m. in the morning, a person used his back to clean out his fire blocks, put the back underneath, and words about the origin of fire. Once again, an alert labor was out in his porch across the street, smote the cigarette , and he's not out cleaning the house, he was suddenly forced to smoke the cigarette, and seen the porch light all across the street. So, Fire Department done a quick knockdown up there. And in the month of February, United Fire Rescue went and served as a squad, which I think will be a very beneficial for the fire. It has a light power on it, it has a gas gauge system for a mobile air unit, and their plans are to put some salvage equipment on it, like wet bags, plastic, part of paper, things like that, maybe should help repair places once you're planning. And we've had a couple meetings so far in the process of, I don't want to say consolidation, reorganization, free fire companies and myself and the chiefs of God together have discussions on this. The companies are going to get committees together, and we're going to meet the Fire Fire Committee. Fire manager and myself has met a few times and talked this over, some ideas, and some contact people, get ahold of us, get some place in the... Okay?
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on, the quarter of the mayor, nothing more? Did you bid knee?
Yes.
Thank you. For the police chief?
Yeah, passing around the calls for service here. We've had an increase in the arrests for driving while intoxicated. We've had people, everything from striking a building to getting vehicles involved in snowbanks, which may relate to some of our criminal mischief and hit-and-run accidents that we have, but we have seven listed for the month of February. In the last two weekends, we've had another five arrests on driving while intoxicated. We had a press from the Streets Committee about West 4th Street, and the officer's been down there. We're going to try to see what time the complaints are coming in for it, they're monitoring it there. We had 19 citations written this month, some on West 4th, some in other areas, but the officers are down there monitoring to see if there's anything in reference to that complaint. I had a meeting with some of the residents in reference to Hale Street, and we're going to start the public relations campaign on that about the crosswalk, and we have some safety equipment that the people that have, that are site impaired there use, and we're coming out with the press and we're working with them on that. As far as Penda, it's still in the works about having a light, they will install it there, but it's going to be tied with that bridge project on South Main, so we're not looking for something, anything too quick on that. We had a, people calling up about abandoned vehicles, and we've been working with the Borough on these snow removals. In the last two weeks, we've had about six vehicles that had been parked for days at locations, and the officer's done a great job in either getting them. The owners moved the car, are towing them out. Once again, a few years ago, we had this problem, and we do notifications, we give people every chance to get it before we have to tow it out, but we have maintenance, and we also become an eyesore in the community. A couple of these had multiple flat tires. Tonight, I'm going to ask the council permission, we have one of our part-time officers here who is now the next to be hired by the department full-time, and we have a letter of resignation from Officer Harvey Rader, so I'm going to ask counsel for hiring of Officer Harden, who just got help with it. Dexter is a local resident, he's graduated from Lewistown High School, Lockham University, I'm really happy to have him here. Dexter has served the community, and we look to see about him sergeant full-time on March 18th, which will be the last day of the other officer there. Council approval?
I'll make another motion, ladies and gentlemen. Second. Motion seconded, if the officer asks for part-time, John, let's move on.
Chief, hold on.
The civil service, he's a...
Yeah, the civil service, he's the next one on the lot, yes.
He's the next?
Yes.
You said he's next on the list.
Yes, he's the next on the list.
He's selected from the list.
He was already selected by civil service.
Yes, he's in the civil service exam, and he's the next one on the list.
He's been part-time, we're just moving from part-time to full-time.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor of I? Aye. Question carries, the greater this?
All right, thank you all, I appreciate the opportunity to serve all of you, and I appreciate you fulfilling our childhood dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last, one of the two last orders that I have, there's one is, I want to point out that we've really been working on these burglaries of these cars during the night, and recently, two officers out driving early morning hours encountered a man, and they subsequently have arrested him and charged him with several car burglaries. They recovered property that the people didn't even know they were missing. As a matter of fact, it was Sergeant Roberts, it was one of the arresting officers there. But that's what we're trying to do, we real eyes in the middle of the night, because people are out, so we have arrest on this man, and we've connected him with about four car burglaries there. The only other quest I have is, under the underage drinking grant, we have in the budget a part that's paid for by the state for billboards to fight underage drinking, and there's a contract for that, and has been the department from council that gets approval, I can verify it's in the budget as a line item, it's reimbursed by the Pennsylvania Book of Control Board, so, and, so that's where we are, and I talked with the council president about that.
I appreciate it. Motion, I have to go.
2685, $2,685, and they invoice for it, and it's paid for out of the...
I'll make that motion. Second. Would you second if the proper officers signed the contract? Questions? All in favor of I? Aye. Questions?
Chief, if I had one question, under 2611, we're coding the noise and loud music, where was that at?
That was on Chestnut Street, and that turned out to be a domestic case where a woman was being assaulted, so we basically unfound it as a noise complaint, but it was sent in originally when they coded it in there, because it was a...
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. For the recreation, we are hiring summer employees, I didn't, I don't know if you got the list of names tonight, but did you get them?
Yes.
There's 10, I didn't have mine, there's 10 for lifeguards, and three for maintenance. We still need, I think, four, probably four or five lifeguards because of the, because of police often go, and shifting and things like that, but we wanted to take care of these 10 tonight if we could, and the three maintenance people, that way we have them tied up, or, you know, tied in, ready, we can get information to them, that way we can get the background checks done, we can get ahead of the ballgame. So we appreciate if we get our footage.
Greg, these ma, I thought we were going to use our own guys for the maintenance committee this year, with the grasses up there.
No, we, we're going to go with three, one of them, there's two college students, I think, right? It's two colleges, and one, one gentleman is retired gentleman that put in for it. And it's, he knows it's a part-time job. He knows that to come back for that, but... We talked, we talked, we'll get it. Do you need a motion over?
For that, what we do, yes.
Want to wish a counsel?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Motion seconded, any questions about the list?
Roll call.
Nice to see most of them are from the Borough.
Yeah, I think all of them.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
There he is here.
Yes. Question carries?
Second thing, Little League Baseball came to us, they, they would have a request, and it would be good for us if we agreed to it. They want to take the, they have the food stand out here, and the rest rooms are beside it, and the rest rooms are down the far end, and the rest rooms are very much in disarray. The mayor tried to get some work done on them, but just we fell through. What they're offering to do is they'd like to enlarge their food stand a little bit, and then make a unisex bathroom, handicapped accessible unisex bathroom. They would have the key to it, that way when they had opened up for baseball, they would close it. Now, if we had any special events, like the basketball tournament they have down here, any other thing like the, the night out, the night out we have down here, we could get the key, unlock it now, so it could be used for other things too. The idea being is that way it's not open all the time, kids aren't in there, you know, making a mess of it. And then, that way we'll keep a nice restroom down that way, we have people visiting here for Little League Baseball, for districts and things like that, it'd be a nicer, it'd be a nicer position for them. Plus their food stand, if you've ever been over there, their food stand is quite small. They would like to be able to bring a water line over so they can have a sink there, so they can wash up and things, and that would make it nicer for them, and they're willing to do it on their dime, still on our property, so it still belongs to us. It would help us out, and at the same time, help them out, I'm sure.
Do we have to do a contract, Greg, as far as lease?
We would have to talk to, we'd have to talk to Snooky and find that out, I don't know.
I envision it for insurance.
Oh, no, no, I agree with you. We could ask Snooky about that, all ordinance, to be sure.
Are they going to keep the clean?
Yes, they would clean them, they have their, they're doing their scenes, and they would clean them.
That's a good deal there. It would be pretty fun if somebody was in there.
What's that?
It would be pretty fun if that's a big hog thing.
Well, it's, it, basically, it belongs, the property belongs in the Borough, meaning it's wrong, it's still ours, because it's on Borough property.
Yeah, but if he's saying if somebody breaks in there, are we liable, or we going to be all responsible, or are they?
Well, are we responsible now if someone breaks in it?
What happens if they take the food and stuff, that's, I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, I agree, but that's been going on, that place has been down there for years. I don't know exactly how it's been handled totally. I know they've had difficulties having it in the past.
If we need to expand, if we spend the money and do it right, and not have any unisex bathroom, to provide, to provide white facilities to the community.
Yeah, one of the issues that you have to look at would be, it's, that's flooded down there, and there's some exceptions for flooded, for buildings, and so I don't know exactly what the location is, because it'd be the flood, and then floodway is a lot more stricter than flood fringe, and, and if you, and on the improvement and size, it would be an issue. They'd have to be addressed before you do it.
We may, may not, just someone want to make a motion out of it?
I'd make a motion, we table it until we have more information.
Related to, yeah.
How soon did it?
Financing, you know, us doing it or them doing it, or, you know, just...
We have a motion to table it for now. Motion seconded, all in favor of I? Aye. Anything else, Greg?
No, I believe that takes care of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, quarter of the borough solicitor, number one, residential rental registration and regulation orders.
Right, I, obviously, you just had a public meeting in relation to that, I have you with us with me, but before you take any action, I want to give to the secretary of the meeting a copy of a letter, Mr. O'Donnell, I think he was at the last public meeting, Mr. O'Donnell owns a rental, and he asked whether that, in my opinion, violated the Ethics Act, and I, there is an exclusion, he has one rent, and the exclusion in the Ethic Act says that conflict of interest does not include an action having a diminished economic impact, or which affects to the same degree a class consisting of the general public or a sub-class. So basically, and it's based on, it's a case called Calvall, which is, by the way, it's a 2002 ethics opinion, which, by the way, had to do with the rental ordinance. And the issue would be is if you're a real large renter, then that's different, but if you're like, you have one or two, there's a lot of people in your situation, so then you have a class, and you're not being treated separately from that class.
Well, you get your class.
And, and what do you have? Do you have any?
No, I got none.
Okay. Anybody else have any? I'm giving this to, you can put it with the minutes.
Do you have anything else, Jeff?
Not beyond the, not beyond the, well, there's Mark, we're talking of the minute smoking, it's...
I made a motion for the ordinance, it says written, number 2015-3.
Motion on the table?
Second.
Motion seconded.
Roll call.
Any discussion before we go? Roll call, please.
I motion, it was to be voted on.
Mr. Adams?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yep.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
There he is here.
No.
Mr. Rager?
Yes. We have 43 voted here, motion passed.
Resolution, yeah, resolution.
There you are. Number two is banned smoking ordinance.
This came up at the last week council meeting, I mean, it had to do with reinforcement of the smoking ordinance dealing with smoking in parks, these are the electronic cigarettes. We were at law and ordinance last month and discussed that, and the proposed resolution to this is to expand the definition of smoking as per the proposed draft ordinance that I have in front of you. What it does is it includes not just smoking, traditional cigar, cigarette plate, but also specifically includes electronic cigarettes, and goes into kind of a technical discussion of what they are. And it has a catch-all to the use of simulated tobacco product that imitates or mimics tobacco products. So, the, the solution to bring e-cigarettes into the smoking ordinance would be to expand the definition of smoking. And that's what this proposes to do. This isn't for a vote tonight. It's just for permission.
I make a motion to advertise. Second. Motion seconded advertising. Questions? If not, on favor, I.
I think they're right. But you people are in a public setting and you're communicating to listeners. That is most inappropriate. You have to provide accommodations for handicapped people when you're in this business. You're not even speaking loud enough that I can hear you in the front row. What was the vote that, uh, Sosser Snuck presented? Was that for the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, partner.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Now, what was, how was it? Who voted what for it?
Motion.
Motion passed.
Let, let, uh, Max.
He's prepared to know.
Mr. Adams, a nay. Mr. Lawson, a yes. Mr. Moore, a nay. Mr. O'Donnell, a yes. Mr. Shaw, a yes. Mr. Seer, a no.
Larry Seer.
Larry Seer. Mr. Reger, a yes. Four to three. It passed.
So, as it is written today, it passes with all those things in it and all those questions we asked. Okay, thank you very much.
Just a moment, thanks for some information here. I received a letter Thursday. Also, nothing of qualification that parking tickets can now be paid online on the borough's website. Only the Lewis County Police Department website. That is up and running. In addition, the refuse and sewer bills can now be paid online as well. Residents can go to the borough website, click on refuse and sewer, go to office and pay their bill using a credit card or a bank card. And their stickers can be mailed to them for small shopping and handling fee of two dollars. EG Channel, just a quick update. Letters have been sent to the Atlanta Broadband and ZF L is regarding them carrying the MCTV channel. I have not received a response from either to date. Also, letters been sent to the National Public Radio NPR regarding the use of their audio feed. When the channel is running in the loop mode and I have not received a reply from them at the end.
Did I, did I ask to put that website on and build from now on?
Yes, there's a, there's a printout that will be available. We'll sweep those accounts every day and we can put that on a report for each council meeting. That's the nature of that.
No.
Hey, you want to.
I want to, like, like, when you send the bill down, that bill, that bill will have the website where you can.
Yes, it'll be noted. Yes, absolutely. It'll be noted on the bottom of the bill that the bill can be paid online at the website. It's one bill, one bill.
I'll make a motion to do that. Motion seconded. Way to cross it. I'm responsible for your dinner.
Yeah, we do. We swap it every year here.
On favor, I. Anything else from the borough? That's all. Any questions for the borough? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. A Streets Committee, February twelve.
The Streets Committee meeting we had, the one thing we have to take action on is the ninety-day trial period has expired for the Harold Street project or, you know, thing that we put into, into act. It's, the Street Committee's recommendation to continue it for thirty days. We're gonna put some meters in to get traffic flow regulations. We're gonna get some more information from the chief. Check with the property owner of the Kish Creek to see if we can get that made, returned into exit only, entrance only, not exit, just entrance. So, that's one thing that needs action from council tonight. If we vote to extend that or, or if we decide.
I think we need to extend it for thirty days until we, until we get a chance to talk to the property owner and to do our review of, of traffic, see how much flow we do have there. Because thirty days, I know it's costly for the gentlemen that's worried about it, but, it's concerned about it. But I would sooner weigh on the safety side. If we have someone hit there in an accident or something like that and we love to change back without checking it out, we would be, I think we would be at fault for that. So, we want to make sure we take care of this, make sure it's correct before we do it.
As we checked with the police department, I think we did get a report that there have not been recorded accidents at that location.
No, but I think you're looking for the counter.
Yeah.
On the counter, yeah. With the weather, we tried again. So, within thirty days, we should, the way it's looking, we'll get a report for you and then you can see how much traffic, the type of vehicles. So, there hasn't been any accidents?
Is it gonna show how much is coming in and how much is going out? I mean, if there is, is it gonna show how many people go over?
Well, we're gonna try to put it, and that's the question after Streets. Do you want it closer to Main or closer to Dorcas? Because it's, it's two, it's two tubes and they're about two foot apart. So, we can put it. So, if you want to see how much traffic is coming off of Main or do you want to do a weak. I really don't think the counter's gonna do any, I mean.
Well, not like we have some data that says how much traffic.
What I was talking about was how much driving is coming in. I was going to Harold Street and how much driving is going in from Harold Street.
What do you tell you? On, on Kish.
Yeah, that's, I, I think that's what we need to do to see how much.
To be two counters, right?
And both ways. Just one, just one.
Yeah, but to know who's coming this way and who's going that way, you'd need two separate counters.
That's why I asked if you were gonna get through.
The counter connection, the counter connection, you do that.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we want this thing to, we want to do that. So, we could put it across that, that lip there if you want. To show in and out.
And it's gonna show you, it's gonna show you how many in and how many out.
Yeah, it doesn't, it'll go, because it hits the first thing, it tells which way. So, when you hit the first thing, it knows the next tube it hits. That's how it works. So, and vice versa. So, it can give you both.
I make a motion that we extend it to thirty days until we get a chance to get this all shorts correct. Motion seconded. Extend for thirty more days. Anything else from Streets?
Uh, let me see here. There was Robert DiArman from West Sixth Street had addressed Streets Committee and the chief had talked about that, about all the traffic that's on West Fourth Street, excessive speed, et cetera, large trucks. That's something that is, the chief said he's looking into. And, Mr. White's looking into the overview of the handicap parking spaces. Something that, we're joined here. Just elaborate just a little bit on that.
We've, we've pulled files of all the handicap parking permits that were issued in the borough. And we're trying to create a database as to how old those permits are. So, that we can give the information to council and they can decide if some of these permits, people may not even be living there anymore. The people that applied for the permits may have moved or are gone. So, we want to try to get, we want to call the permits to active permits is basically what the research is for.
Thank you. And there was a couple other requests from people to look at crosswalks. One is Valley Street. Valley Street and Third Street, that intersection, the crosswalk. There's been a couple people that have been close calls on foot there. And it goes back again to excessive speed and we're gonna.
Weren't we looking into the signs? We're a little bit hard.
The height of the sign and we actually are petitioning PennDOT.
Yes, and the letter, the letter was sent to PennDOT. PennDOT does everything by hard copy letter. So, a letter was sent to PennDOT requesting assistance from them in some sort of a study of that intersection to help us improve the signage or the crosswalk or in any way we can. So, as soon as we get a response from that, we'll give that to Streets later.
And the last thing was updating the school zones, signings and flashing lights. Mr. White went out with some opinion from PennDOT and apparently our signage at our school zones are.
Well, our, our school resource officer was in touch with some of the folks at the school. The signage in that area has been deficient for quite some time. PennDOT came out. They happen to be in the area and they had some interns that they were working with. So, they came to the school. They did a quick study. They determined that the, the signs that are made that come on at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day, the end of the day signs were actually not set up for timing properly. So, he gave us a list of all the signs that we can order and place. And we've got permits from PennDOT. First thing, the only thing we're really waiting was the school to adjust that sign so that it flashes in the afternoon at the proper time. So, it'll match the signs that they're gonna put out.
Excuse me, Mr. White. That's been done. We actually fell back on the borough and them did it.
Oh, great. All right. Then we'll proceed with that.
Okay. That's all we have.
Moving on. EG Channel Committee, February eighth, Matt Warren.
As our manager indicated, we had sent some letters out to two of the other cable contractors in the area. We haven't heard back from them. The indication from Phil Lucas at the Lewis County Courthouse Communications Center, the fiber from Comcast has been completed. It's completed on Friday afternoon. And their equipment for the county has been ordered and should be in-house hopefully by the end of next week. Mr. Herto, myself attended the district meeting two, two weeks ago on Thursday and then they took a vote on that. And the school district is moving forward with that and picking up the tab that they need to do on their side to continue this process. The launch date is still hanging in there, thirteenth of April. And Mr. Herto's Media Three class will be handling all the inserts for us from the county and from all the school buildings and also from the borough. And I believe Mr. White is waiting for to give a bit of stuff to them.
Certainly.
Certainly. Mr. Remy's working on the five oh one C three for this committee. I'm not sure that takes a while, so we're probably. Yeah, it's pretty of a long process. I guess that's it. We're still waiting to hear from NPR for the non-commercial use of their information on the back. So, there's nothing really needs to be approved here. It's just an update. We are moving forward and hopefully I can come back in April and say we're live on the air. So, we'll see how that goes. The other thing I have is two resolutions here, appointing Kevin Codish and Jim Tunnell to the EG Committee. And as a resolutions, twenty fifteen five, I guess they're both on there, right? So, yeah, okay. So, we need, that's the interaction we need on that. Make most of it clear for the resolution.
Motion seconded. Appoint those two gentlemen to the EG Channel Committee. Any questions? We need a roll call please here.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Reger?
Yes. Anything else, Matt?
Not for you, Jim.
Thank you. Okay, law ordinance committee, February twenty-sixth.
Most of, most of this we've covered, the rental, rental registration ordinance, which was just passed here a moment earlier ago. At our last meeting, we talked about the Internet Property Maintenance Code and Fire Code. Mr. Remy's working on that and for revision. Is that correct?
That's me.
Oh, I'm sorry. We talked about the sewer lateral inspections. Mr. White indicated that the camera, I believe, is working for that.
We're in the process of gathering bids, updated bids for the three companies for the lateral camera for the sewer drop.
Uh, the smoking ordinance that Mr. Remy presented to us, I believe you took care of that, did you not? Okay. Some miscellaneous items was information of the dog park and also the allowance of letting dogs in Red Park. There was some discussion on that. And Chief Hurkett also had some information on the PennDOT. And I'll let you address that if you will, the, because of the bridge work here and what it's gonna do with the borough.
Yeah, we have the work on three twenty-two that we're doing in the lanes right now. The biggest impact is going to be in June. With Charles Street's gonna be closed for thirty days. We're working with PennDOT. We have plenty of signage. But right now, we're watching to see how it goes. We're looking to make sure there's no increase in truck traffic right now. And then when Charles Street is closed, we're going to have a lot of signs and some enforcement to get the vehicles off before they hit the town. So, they're not getting them on Water, Water Street or the other way coming back, you know, clogging up things on Water Street.
Now, I missed one thing. Mr. Remy, if you can bring us some update on the new gun laws handed down.
Currently, the borough's ordinance makes it unlawful to discharge a firearm in the borough except in self-defense or defensive property. And it doesn't apply to police officers. There's a relatively new law in Pennsylvania called the Uniform Firearms Act. And what it does is it essentially preempts, says state law with regards to gun, local gun ordinances, preempts the local laws. The city of Harrisburg is currently involved in a lawsuit that was brought by a gun, gun rights group. And a federal judge, Judge Dowling down in Harrisburg, just had a hearing and issued an order on an injunction, perhaps he is. And at least thus far in the litigation, Judge Dowling upheld Harrisburg's ordinance against the discharge of firearms, essentially saying that state law doesn't cover that. So, the local municipality can adopt an ordinance regarding the discharge of guns. So, I think at this point, we should probably stay the course and see how the litigation progresses before making any changes to our ordinance. And also note too, that probably pretty much any situation where a gun was discharged in the borough, there are crimes, violations that could be utilized other than our, our ordinance. So, that's what that is.
Thank you. Do you have anything else from the law ordinance?
I don't.
Okay. Any questions for the law ordinance? Moving on to finance. Finance committee, March fifth, February, July.
Okay, item one, the make man, I think you have copies of it. Go please. Yours or the color I put in white. What it is, is our purchase of materials, equipment and goods needed for the work in the borough. If you look at it, item A, we're all the crushed stone aggregate materials, all the vitam discom street materials, vitam disstockpile patching materials to UPM premium to the Eastern Industries Incorporated. They were a little better on, on the ones I just listed. And in the second one, B, we would afford to buy two of the, the material, stockpile forty-five to Jay Fullpro and Sons. They were a little better on that one. So, we will have to make a vote on that. The next thing is the facility use forms. I don't know if you've all got copies or seen copies. And you know, right now, we had one generic facility use form. We now have changed to a property, the property and lots form. We have one for the pavilions down here. And we have ones for the athletic fields. The reason we did this is because there are, people were paying a flat fee, twenty dollars and you're using the field all of your haul. Now, it's a, there's a fee, there's a twenty dollar, I think it's twenty-five dollar registration fee. And then if you're gonna use it for an entire season, it's two hundred dollars. Reason being is we have to, we have to pay, we spent twenty-four thousand dollars, I believe, last year cutting grass. And so, we have to pay somebody down here cutting grass around, around these fields and around the parks and keeping things cleaned up. And we were charging twenty dollars, I think you guys know, last year. And we had to figure out some way to at least recoup some of the, of the expense. So, if you look carefully, there's different, I'd say there's three different ones. So if you look carefully, there's different, I'd say there's three different ones, like the property of the lot, like we rented the lot out for the trees up on Livingston Street and we had like a fee for that. Now we have that particularly covered under something also. And the pavilions down here, we were charging, I think, $20 or $25 for the pavilions. The pavilions now are $15. Now if you want electricity or if you want the water turned on, there's a little fee that goes on with that too. But we thought it'd be better if we handled these in a different way than we have. It's been very generic, this is more specific. And also listed there for police, like the gear down in the fields and the police have to be called to come down here. Your organization will get like a free or a baseball game, they have a fight break out or something, the police have to come down. They're going to get charged $10 or something, I get extra for the police have to come down here. I mean, it's just, it's to take care and keep track of things.
And it's very minimal.
It's very minimal. It's very minimal, I agree. But we have to, we have to account for, like I say, we're spending a lot of money and we have to recoup some of it somewhere. We're not going to recoup all of it now, but we're trying to get as much as we can. We would have to change the cost and schedule fees.
To do that.
Because the prices we have in now are the cost and schedule fee, so we would have to amend the cost and schedule fee.
How can we do that when the... Those words, act dollars are paying for that.
They're paying.
They're paying for the Rec Park.
But they're not, but it's not covering it all. It doesn't cover near it.
How can we assess someone a pound a...
We're not assessing a pound, we're just telling them, here's what you have to pay to use the facilities for three months or four months.
The question I have is whether, the fees are the fees, whether the Rec Board recommends increases in fees or has the authority to do so on its own.
No, they're bringing this forward for the borough council.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
We're not saying, we're not saying nobody's doing this, we're asking the council to...
That's good, Dan.
We brought this for the council to address.
I misunderstood you. You were saying what the fees were we established. I'm saying that you can't establish.
No, no. But we came up with something because we knew what we were at, we came up with some kind of a ballpark to work with.
What my question, like, for example, the police, okay, what, the borough's taxpayers don't, they're paying for our police force and they're going to wherever they're called to go. Now how can we tell someone that they gotta pay more money because they had the police down there? I mean, that's the part, I don't understand how you're doing that.
I, I, this is, I'm not aware of the details of the plan, okay, so I'm not going to comment on that right now. I do know the council will have to approve. That's a point. That's a point, I agree.
Is that made one?
It's just like this facility, we charge people coming to use it, the taxpayers are...
This is a rental property.
So is that...
So is the fields.
So is the fields.
Right, but those people aren't paying for our, I mean, the borough's paying for our police force.
I don't think, I don't think that's what he meant.
Yeah. You could put in the rental agreements for the fields and stuff, you can, you can always charge for use of the fields, use of the facilities, establish a fee to do so. And you can also require the entities that are using to provide you with certificate of insurance and things like that.
What the form says, special services requested, so if they request the police come down here.
Yes.
It's an additional fee.
Like if they have a problem, they call the police.
That's different.
Yes, but if they ask for the police to down here to watch over, like in a program or something.
If there's a fight at a ballgame...
The police will come and cover that. They'll come and cover that. But this is, if you're going to have something down here that you want the police here.
If you want the police.
You want the police here.
If it's something extra.
Okay, like kid connection. Now, we don't have kid connection. I'm sorry. If we have kid connection, then we don't have anything to do with that per se.
Okay.
It would be if like a lot of places, what they do is they have fire police, they hire fire police.
Correct, but maybe in this case...
I thought you might have heard of the little gang that was standing across the wall, Little League is standing behind them.
No, and if I keep going that way, if I apologize, or if they come over that way, I apologize. Yes.
The reason I raise the issue is just because what you were saying, we did, we did, we did and I think council...
Bring them to council, bring it to council.
Do you have something specific tonight or are you still working on that? Is this, is this what we're proposing, Ray?
This is what we're proposing. I mean, if you don't like it, we can alter it or change it or whatever you want. This is just what we're proposing.
The fees, you're not proposing the fees tonight.
For what?
He's proposing fees and here's a spreadsheet where all the facility use forms that were applied for and issued.
Really direct?
Really direct.
Yes.
This is what the amount was in revenue for the athletic fields and this is what the amount was in revenues for the borough properties and lots with the proposed fees that the Rec Board came up with. This is what the revenue would be for the identical forms that we had this in place last year. What it basically does is it reduces the expense of what it takes to run the fields and mow the grass, all that stuff, by about 45 percent. It's not a huge number.
It's not, yeah, it's not a big number, but it certainly helps. You take 4% off of your budget or something, that helps a little bit.
One question I have, if this is approved, when would it start? Would it be in the mid?
Yeah, ones we've already seen for this, for the springtime, we've already signed off on, like the ones we voted on tonight, we could not make the adjustment on them now.
So you're saying...
It would start, it would start with the fall.
So how many do we have?
I think what you should do is you should pick a date, not just say at fall. Pick a date.
How many applications do we have at this point, Jerry? That already came back to you?
February, literally, Travis Archer. Tom Hott.
Were these four, just four of them?
We voted on tonight.
Yes. Were those four notified that this change is part of it?
They wouldn't be decided on.
I'm trying to get the point across, do I understand that?
Baybrook had that money.
That's right.
So Baybrook knew that there was going to be a change there?
No.
No, they didn't, no.
They just basically had to go from the time to fashion that they knew.
That's what I'm saying, if you're going to make a date, you can say effective May first because that would take us...
Anything that would get in there for...
That's just a flatter.
That would take us four from here because these are all... No, I agree, and I agree with you, we should have a date.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I think you're right, we should have the date and I think May first would probably be a date because then we're definitely in the summer.
Okay, if we get a motion on this, gentlemen, we need a date and you can put that in the motion.
Okay, first thing we need to vote on is the purchase of the materials. The May, we need to vote on the A and the B.
Make a motion for the A and the B for the material.
Second.
Motion second, that's going to be Eastern Industries.
Correct. Eastern Industries for A and Folpro and Sons for B.
For B, I'm sorry. Got that? Okay, any further questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Adonal?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Larry Seers?
Yes.
Mr. Reiger?
On the facility use forms, approval of change in fees for facility use.
Make a motion we do that effective May first.
Second.
Motion second, any questions?
Yeah, you know, I've seen that Little League, I've told them $20, over $225. So what's going to happen here is it's going to be a little bit like the rental thing, you know, they're going to raise the renter's, or renter's fee. And what's going to happen here is they're going to start charging the Little League more to play ball because they gotta pay more for the field and I think that's entirely wrong. There's a lot of kids now can't, their parents can't afford it. They pay 15 bucks or something for Little League, you know, now you're going to raise it.
Compared to the Rec Park or to Kiss Park, I mean, we're still...
Yes. Which Kiss Park is that?
Well, they don't have, they're rating all their fields also bad, but it's the other stuff that adds up for them, the refuge and I don't know, they had a couple more things I believe that were listed. So we don't, we just put it on the one number, we don't have it split out. And I don't, I couldn't give you the exact number, but I know we split out the three or four things for Kiss Park or Gary.
Any other questions? I see your point, Ryan, it's less than us money to take care of the fields every more every year.
Honestly, John came to our meeting and when he put up on the screen that it costs us $24,000 to cut the grass down here and well, the parks, Victory Park and all of our parks be cut, that shocked me, it's a lot of money.
It is. Ready to vote? All favor I? I agree with that.
No.
It's a resolution.
Oh, a resolution.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead here.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
I know.
Yes.
Mr. Adonal?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Larry Seers?
No.
Mr. Reiger?
Yes.
Two more things yet, Ross.
The sewer exoneration request by Rob Musnoff, 368 West Fifth Street, recommendation to not exonerate a portion of a sewer bill because the request does not meet the criteria for exoneration.
Not, it does not meet yet.
Why?
It's...
Grab X?
What?
The one for Snook at 368 West Fifth Street, why did that not meet? That ran down the drain, did it not? It went down the drain into the French drain and then went into the sewer, ran out around the French drain.
No, no, this is 368 West Fifth.
This is the one you told was the shower, it ran down the shower, down the group leak, down into the shower.
Yeah, that ran, some of them went in the shower and some of them went down the, I guess the cave ceiling in, but some of the water just stayed in the cave ceiling. And the other one was number four, request from Lynn Bowersock to exonerate 2014 real estate tax penalty because he did not receive his tax bill, recommendation not to exonerate because he did not change his address with Mifflin County Assessment Office.
He did not change.
He did not.
And that come from the assessment office.
That came from the assessment office, absolutely.
We'll take the minute, let's do number three individually there on the sewer exoneration. Need a motion?
Motion not to exonerate.
Motion not to exonerate?
Second.
Motion second, all favor I? I agree with that.
No.
One now, motion carries. And the other one is the real estate penalty type, not to exonerate.
No, not to exonerate. I make motion not to exonerate.
Okay.
Personally, not change their address.
And I'll second that, motion not to exonerate.
Not to exonerate.
Yep.
Any other discussion? If not, all favor I? I agree with that. When the motion carries. Any else from finance, Craig and Mark?
One other thing that was brought up, we were presenting the bill and it comes through finance and it's Mr. Schnuck's bill and it's just review law regarding personnel matters and...
I'm talking about impersonal action, impersonal, we're going to the next session.
This isn't about person, it's about...
It's about, I mean, about the bill itself. I mean, I'm not going to say, there was a council member contacted you about some personnel matters and I, I'm just wondering why we should be billed for it. I mean, I know it's, I guess I should...
I guess that basically then you folks have to determine what I should say. You call me, you ask a question or you want to meet with me, should I meet with you or not?
I think everything should go through John, borough's finance committee.
John Ross.
Send it one straight to them.
We've been here for years about following the chain of command. So you said council policy or not? That's my question.
I'd like to make...
I heard about it.
I'd like to make a motion that we cannot go to council without going through John, Russ or Matt, two of the three have to know about before you can go to the...
Now you're saying president, vice president, John.
Or John, vice president. Two of the three of you before you can go to council, so we're not getting billed for things.
It would be appropriate for me to contact Jeff outside the council and ask questions and get billed 275 hours.
I was instructed to do this from the district attorney. Then he should be paying the bill. Now, that's where that came from.
Well, if you're so interested in it.
And as you do with the lawsuit that I intend to file against the borough. And I was told to contact the solicitor and I did and I explained that to Jeff and I contacted him. I said, Jeff, this is not me contacting you for a personal thing. I said, I was instructed through Harrisburg and the district attorney.
If you're going to sue the borough, why should the borough pay the bill?
I talked to Jeff.
Good point.
I did not sue the borough yet.
You were threatening to, why should they get the bill?
I told Jeff when I was told by the district attorney.
Then he should get the bill. I don't think it's fair, you don't get a bill. You remember years ago, you were on me all the time for not following the chain of command, assisting people do it.
You still don't do it.
I still have your emails.
You still don't do it.
I don't, I don't tell anyone to go to the attorney.
I was told to do that.
Could I make something clear? Just forget about the bill, but in the future, somebody calls me.
Now, you should be paid, I mean, because I've...
Just forget about it.
Didn't work.
You should get paid there.
Nice. Does that make sense?
Not to say to bill anybody for something.
If somebody tells you to go to bill, why shouldn't they get the bill? I'm not yelling at you necessarily, but if you let bad advice, you should be paying the bill.
Why would you have to be...
What you're looking for is available by the committee.
Why wouldn't the district attorney just get the bill? Yeah. Why are you in the middle of it?
The district attorney told me to contact the...
Well, that's something he should...
That's what I get.
Well, we'll hear what... But any information you need, you can come to the committees and you can get it, but you don't show up and it's...
Right, I done what I told you to do.
Just give you my opinion.
I mean...
So if we tell you not to do it again, you're not going to do it again, right? You'll do what you're told to do.
No, I could do whatever to earn a thousand to do.
All right, anything else for finance?
Yeah, I mean, I have, there's meetings a minute from before that, you know, that
somebody else had asked Mr. Schnook why these calls were made and, you know, it's the same situation, but it's on the other foot.
Well, I have a right to ask and I just told you, I just told you why I called.
I understand that, but I'm just saying...
I have no objection to telling you why I called.
But you're always worried about wasting money, well, you're wasting money.
Yeah, that's definitely...
I mean, all this information, my dad was paying their bills. You should have had them so you didn't need to contact to do it.
Anything else for finance? You okay, Mark?
I'm fine.
E, wastewater treatment plant induction, general permit program. Want to hand it out to John?
This is for the authorization to execute the completion certificate to GM Crossop. Works all been completed.
Make a motion to do so. Make a motion to do so. Second. Motion second, to take action to sign the certificate, all favor I? I agree with that. Motion carries. And then the other one is, what's that?
Disapproval to issue files, certificate to GM of Crossop Incorporated.
Need a motion, make a motion to do so. Motion second, certificate, all favor I? I agree with that. Motion carries. Any other, old business, old business, new business. A, acceptance of Dan Lim's attached resignation from the parking authority, requires approval.
Motion approved, second.
Motion second, questions? No, all favor I? I agree. B, disposition of public records, resolution 2015-7, requires approval.
Take the motion.
Second. Motion second, roll call please here.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yep.
Mr. Adonal?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Larry Seers?
Yes.
Mr. Reiger?
Yes.
Any other new business? New business, gentlemen. Okay, John, we still need the executive session for personnel matters. At this time, we're going to go into personnel, executive session for personnel matters and we'll come back out in the turn.